Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, March 12th, Hill of the Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. All this meeting is in order. Thank you all for attending. First item, if you'll please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undethroned, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also please join us for a moment of silence. We'll be moving forward with our agenda. I'll let you know, Commissioner Reubader sends her regrets. She is under the weather this evening, which is why she's not here with us tonight. With that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the Agenda Approval.
I make the motion to be approved the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please, you can now say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, next up, we have one public hearing this evening, and our town attorney will walk us through the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go over a couple of the finer details about our hearing tonight. Public notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. Copy of this notice has also been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. These written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made a part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking tonight, please limit your comments to that as relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes unless you are speaking for a group. In that case, a five-minute exception will be given. All speakers, please come to the microphone so that your statement may be taped. There shall be no debate, debates, and please identify yourself and your address as you come forward. All right, this public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Hill of the Hills Board of Commissioners to consider Nature's Walk, Conditional Use Site Plan. It's a workforce housing multifamily development located at 901 Ninth Avenue in Delight Industrial One Zoning District. It's to modify Phase Two, two four-unit structures and associated site improvements. I don't have anybody on the public hearing comment sign-up sheet. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Will there be no further? I did hear none, correct? There be no further public comment on this item. At this time, the Board of Commissioners will conduct discussion and make their own comments prior to the public hearing being closed and action taken by the Board.
Thank you. Comments, discussion, questions?
Yeah, we've looked at it before. We've seen it a couple of times. It's a pretty clean site plan, and I think they could do a real good job of presenting. Looked good to me.
Okay. Mission would be in order.
I make the motion to be approved the Nature's Walk, Continue, uh, Continue, Conditional Use Site Plan, Workforce Housing Multifamily Development, 901 Ninth Avenue, Light Industrial One Zone District, Modify Phase Two, Two-Fourteen Structures and Associated Site Improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, please, you can now say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is the first time set aside this evening for public comment. We have two opportunities during the Hill of the Hills meetings. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak on any topic to do so. We do ask if you're speaking at public comment, if you would approach the podium when called upon. If you're speaking as an individual, we ask that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask you to keep these comments to five minutes, just to respect the time and moving forward with the meeting. We had one individual sign up, so we'll start with this individual. But if you didn't sign up, no worries, then we'll call from the floor. So first, this evening, we have Ms. Trudy Gardner. Is that correct? Welcome.
Can you all hear me okay? My name is Trudy Lee Gardner. My husband and I live at 2027 South Virginia Dare Trail on the ocean. We are directly across from the First Flight Hotel, which is now under construction. When I spoke to the T D H Planning Board in October of 2016, at that meeting, there were several concerns raised about pedestrian safety with all of the tenants at the hotel crossing the beach road. The original plans called for a restaurant with ocean access at 2029 South Virginia Dare Trail and 2031 South Virginia Dare Trail. Both of those lots are now listed for sale. I understand that the planning board has apparently been told that whichever lot sells first, the other one may be a beach access. There is no guarantee of this, and we are aware of that. We are also aware that the town cannot simply mandate a beach access for a property on the west side of the beach road. I am very concerned about the possibility of 300 to 500 people crossing that beach road in the summertime with no designated access. We reached this number because the hotel will have 152 rooms. Some of these, and most of these, are intended to be suites with one to six persons per suite. Since the closest public access is Eighth Street, which is 500 feet to the south, this raises the potential for a great deal of trespassing. We would really appreciate any suggestions this board may offer, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. We'll move next then to your response to public comment. Ms. Gardner, thank you and your husband for being here and sharing your concerns with us. I'll have to defer to any of the commissioners or town staff if we have any input at this point. Otherwise, for me, I know you brought something up that I'll need to do some homework on and look into, but I don't know if anyone has any comments, that they be prepared off the fly.
No, we'd look into it.
Okay. Then we will follow back up directly with you, and we'll provide an update at our next meeting, just to take this into consideration and see what, as you said, what we can look into as options, or what's really happening with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move on then to introductions and presentations.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Mike Robinson, engineer for the hotel, if you would like him to respond to Ms. Gardner's...
If he has any information and feels comfortable, great.
Sure.
I think that's why you came.
Oh, wonderful.
Well, actually, that was for Nature's Walk.
Okay. I'm just kidding. So, Ms. Gardner, I don't know if you heard that, but the engineer on the projects agreed. Mike, thank you for being willing to jump up and share with us.
Oh, it's not a problem. When we originally did the site plan, we had two oceanfront lots across from the hotel. And on that, we had kind of a grandiose scheme to do a restaurant, swimming pool, beach access. From a financial perspective, the developer could not get anybody that was interested in the restaurant. Surprise to me, I thought it was a huge success. So what he has opted to do, and we were getting ready to bring that back to staff, is he wants to take the southern lot of the two, and we're going to do a much scaled-down swimming pool, beach access, deck type of facility over there. But with 100% certainty, I can tell you that there will be a beach access, and the hotel needs an oceanfront access to be successful. The owner recognizes that. He's got, like I say, he's got one house that's still there. We might still end up using both the lots, but without, with 100% certainty, I can tell you, we're going to at least use the southern lot of the two. Right now, probably leave the houses there in place.
Thank you so much. That's great. Enlightening to all of us.
Thank you.
Any additional information you would want to provide?
I think that covers where we are now then. Is that suffice your question for now? And then as we receive any other updates?
Anything changes related to Michael Ladd's snow on the heat?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Meredith. All right, we will then move on to introductions and presentations. Our first presentation this evening is from the superintendent of our Park Service here, Dave Pallack. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
He's going to give us kind of a year in review look for 2017. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. So this is meant to be just a brief snapshot of what transpired over the year 2017 at all three Cape Hatteras National Seashore, Fort Raleigh National Historic Site, and Wright Brothers National Memorial. I have the distinct pleasure of having the opportunity to manage those three sites and continuing to really enjoy that. So, can I control? Look at that. Thank you. Real brief rundown on the three park units. You're probably familiar with Fort Raleigh National Historic Site. That's where our headquarters office is. Fort Raleigh is a site with about 450 acres, and we'll talk about visitation there in a few minutes. Right across the street from here is Wright Brothers National Memorial, also about a 450-acre park with quite a few visitors, and then Cape Hatteras Seashore, starting at Whalebone Junction, extending almost 70 miles to the tip of Ocracoke. So in total, last year, we had over 3 million visits, something for us to all be really proud of here in Dare County. These are numbers that approach the type of visitation that you expect to see in what they call the Crown Jewel Parks, places like Glacier, places like Grand Teton National Park. So obviously, these three parking units do represent one of the jewels of the National Park Service. We have 79 year-round staff. I wanted to tell you a little bit about how we make ends meet and how we get things done. About 100 seasonal staff that come in during the summertime, just like all of the businesses and other tourism-based operations in the Outer Banks. 352 volunteers that contribute over 20,000 hours. We are so lucky to have that level of volunteer support. It represents really like 10 additional full-time staff throughout the year. Five visitor centers. We had 65,000 overnight camping stays last year in four different campgrounds, one of which is close by, Oregon Inlet Campground, north of Oregon Inlet. Over 200 public toilets. Our maintenance chief thinks that's important for me to tell you. Two water treatment plants, 60 septic systems, 84 parking lots, 230 buildings and three airstrips. And we do all this, sorry, on a budget of close to $15 million. We are extremely lucky to have funding from Congress of close to $10 million every year. And then we bring in an additional, close to $5 million through other fees, such as lighthouse climbing, entrance fees at Wright Brothers, and off-road vehicle permit fees. So real quick rundown, what happened in terms of visitation? On the left-hand side of this graph, these are numbers of visits, and you can see the bottom's 150,000. Fort Raleigh National Historic Site was similar to the level of visitation over the last five years, with about 270,000 visits, down 6% from last year, I would call that, basically flat. Wright Brothers, down 10% at just over 400,000 visits. Most likely, the decline in visitation is a result of the visitor center, which is currently under renovation. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. And then Cape Hatteras Seashore, also mostly flat, but a slight uptick at 1%. This is the highest level of visitation we have recorded in 14 years. And you'll note from 2014 through 2017, we're seeing a trend of increased visitation. It's particularly noteworthy, because if you remember, there was a blackout that we had this last summer, with almost one entire week on Hatteras and Ocracoke Island with very little visitation. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the shoulder season. We're probably all noting that traffic is very, very busy throughout the year now, and that, you know, maybe our shoulder seasons are growing. These data indicate that that may be the case. November of 2017 was the highest visitation that we've had since 1998, and you can see the bar there in 2017. And you can also see since 2014 that the numbers appear to be going up a little bit. It's a challenge for us as a tourism-based industry here, because our seasonal staff that come in can only work for six months. Real quick, some other interesting trends. If you're talking about visitation to Ocracoke Island, which is of course in Hyde County, numbers have been going down dramatically. Numbers today are only about 60% of what they were in the late 90s and early 2000s, most likely a result of the longer ferry route. These data give you a glimpse into the impact of the power line being cut during the last week of July. What I'm going to show you first in the blue here are the typical number of cars that we see in the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse Parking Lot. It's between 750 and 1,000 cars per day. And in 2017, this lighter color bars here show that, starting on the 29th, which is when the mandatory visitor evacuation started, for the rest of that week, we had about an 80% to 90% drop in the number of vehicles we recorded there. So this is just one indicator of the impact of that power line cut on visitation on Hatteras Island. 2017 was a warm year with average rainfall. This is one of the most popular questions we get, was it a warm year, a cold year, rainy? These data are from the Billy Mitchell Airport in Frisco. So this looks like a lot of stuff, and it looks confusing. I'll try to walk you through it very, very quickly. The red bars are the maximum temperature, the gray bars are the minimum temperature, and we've recorded those monthly. And you'll notice this starts at zero. This is departure from the 30-year average. So if the bar goes up, it means that the temperature, the max and the min-temperature were warmer than the 30-year average. You'll note for basically every month across the board, other than maybe December, the temperatures were between 2 and up to 8 degrees warmer in terms of a max and a min-temperature. And the bars all the way on the right side of the graph are for the year on average. On average, we were 2 to 3 degrees warmer in terms of our max and min-temperature. The lower graph is rainfall. The dashed line represents 100% of average rainfall. So if the bar for January goes right up to about 100%, it was an average January. You can see the months fluctuate. October and November were only about 40% of average rainfall, and maybe that's what drove such high fall visitation. The last bar is the year total. We are spot-on average rainfall a year. That's just a few weeks ago. I like this photograph. Hard to believe we had 10 and a half inches of snow here. We had a great visitor engagement over the last year. We gave almost 3,000 formal programs in the three park units, and almost 85,000 visitors had the opportunity to enjoy those programs, and we gave badges to almost 6,500 junior rangers. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the exciting things that happened, some of the challenges and some of our future challenges. This is Shelley Island. I got to be on All Things Considered to talk about Shelley Island. Kind of fun when you get to do things like that for three minutes. It was a little bit nerve-wracking. My dad said I did okay. Anyway, this is Shelley Island, August 17th, 2017. It's really just a sandbar. Everybody knows that. Anybody that lives here understands that things changed quite a bit. That island was about 27 acres and nine tenths of a mile long. This is from the end of January from this year. It's changed quite a bit since then. You can see that that sandbar is gone. It's merged with Cape Point. The campground up to the upper left there is the Cape Point Campground. So things have changed. And since Winter Storm Riley came through, I'd say, from going down to Cape Point on Friday, it looks like Cape Point's about half the size that it was just a week ago. So things changed quite a bit. We've talked a lot about off-road vehicle management. I won't go into the details, other than to say that over the last year, we had a record number of off-road vehicle permits sold, just under 40,000 permits. Every year, this seems to be a more and more popular activity at the seashore. We've also had, through some changes that we've made, increased access in the areas that are open. There are 29 miles throughout the year open for driving at Cape Hatteras Seashore. In 2013 and 2014, we had between 17 and 20 of the 29 miles open. We started to make some changes in 2015 to enhance access and saw an immediate jump in the miles open on average between May and September. And over the last couple of years, we've come close to, you know, really being able to open almost all of that mileage. Last year, 94% of the mileage was open between May and September. These are some of the improvements we've made locally. This is ramp four across from the Oregon Inlet Fishing Center. We raised that ramp by 24 inches to make it more resilient to flooding, which has been an issue. Okay, I'm going to, maybe you can help me at the computer. This is a video I just wanted to show you in terms of some of the impacts we had just very recently. See if you're able to play that. I lived in this house for three months. This was just a week ago, and this is our housing in, basically, in South Nagseth. And we had that wash over there. It basically occurred for four days at every high tide, and this is not unusual. This is a great snapshot of what a lot of folks endured, but unfortunately, that unit is probably going to be mostly uninhabitable, which will be a real impact for being able to house seasonal staff this summer. And we are most likely moving those two housing units. When we get the funding, they'll be moved as far across the street as we can. Oh, I love this photo as well. This is 1960, and the two housing units that are closest to the beach, the one on the left, is the same unit that the waves were washing around. You can see in this photograph in 1960, folks that walked to the beach probably were, you know, breaking a serious sweat by the time they got there, and now they can dive off of their front porch. Some other improvements at the Coquina Beach Days area, we put a new handicapped accessible boardwalk in that survived the storms very well. We're proud of these enhancements we've been able to make. This is one down on Hatteras Island. And what to look forward to. This is the Wright Brothers Visitor Center. It's a national historic landmark. It was built in 1960 as part of what was called the Mission 66 Building Era in the Park Service. So the Mission 66 era started in '55, and it ended in '66. Does anybody know why 1966 was an important date?
This is Chris.
Okay, so last year, 2016, was the centennial of the National Park Service. So '66 was the 50-year anniversary. So over $1 billion was poured into the Park Service, and this is a prime example of a Mission 66 Visitor Center. The Secretary of the Interior designated it as a national historic landmark in 2001. So we're making really good progress on the visitor center rehab, and I'll tell you, it's been challenging. Brand-new roof, all-new windows in the building. These windows stretch from this end of this building all the way to the other end. They're custom fabricated. So anybody that's done a kitchen renovation knows that something like this is a kitchen renovation on steroids. So we're hoping to have the visitor center redone late in August. It wouldn't surprise me if it's a void a little bit, but we will be sure to invite all of you and all the residents of Hill of the Hills and Dare County to enjoy the ribbon cutting for the grand reopening. Some great partners, the Outer Banks Preservation Association helped us with the Pack It In, Pack It Out campaign. This is an effort to try to encourage and educate the public to take their trash off the beach with them. I will tell you, we're having an increasingly difficult time with trash, even right here on the highway, on Landing, on Collington Avenue, with trash blowing out of people's vehicles. I don't know where it's coming from, but we are spending several hours every day just trying to work on this with NCDOT, and it's really more difficult than cutting the grass these days. So we'd love to talk to all of you, and we've been speaking with our partners with NCDOT in Dare County about ways to do some better messaging here. The Beach Buggy Association, and Cape Hatteras Anglers Club, and Outer Banks Preservation Association helped us on a new ORV educational video. And I also want to thank the First Flight Society and the Outer Banks Tourism Bureau for supporting last year's National Aviation Day. So thank you so much for the opportunity to provide an update. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Dave. Any questions?
How much does an off-road permit cost, and how long is it valid for?
We sell two off-road vehicle permits. We sell a 10-day permit that costs $50, and it's valid for 10 days. And then we sell an annual permit, and that's valid for 365 days from the date of purchase. It's $120. And you can buy those online. You can go to recreation.gov. You can buy one right now from the computer. You can print your own and tape it to your windshield.
Any other questions? Dave, before you go, I would just like to thank you for the great work that you do. Just in, I know my interaction with you on a professional level, you're just responsive and approachable, and some of these great trends that we've seen over the past few years, I think, are very attributable to the way you lead and manage, and so I just want to thank you personally for that.
Thank you, Mayor Dave. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Next, under Introductions and Presentations, is an opioid abuse presentation. And John, would you like to introduce your guest? Commissioner Winley has put this presentation together, so.
Would you like to do that again?
Sure. I'd like to start with, uh, Roxanna Ballinger from the Health Department and from the Dare County Saving Lives Task Force. Thank you for coming out today.
Thank you, Commissioner Winley. Commissioner Winley, who is also a member of the Saving Lives Task Force, he wanted me to come today to talk about what we're doing with the task force, and so I'm happy to come and share all that information with you, and thank you for that fan invite. First, I want to talk about, let's see, we got a point right here. First, I'd like to talk about our history and how we got started real quick. We had, back in 2014, you know, we had resources in Dare County for substance use disorders, many things addressing those kinds of things. We had Ford, and we had Project Purple, and Dare Casa, and law enforcement, but everybody was kind of working and doing their own thing. Everybody was working in a silo. And Commissioner Wally Overman pulled everybody together back in July of 2014, and that's how we got started. We started initially as the Substance Abuse Prevention and Education Task Force. That's where we felt like the direction and the need were. And we quickly, wasn't too long after that, maybe about a year or so, we got settled in. And it took a while for the task force to really get going. At first, you know how it is, people don't show up and that sort of thing. And it started to really take a grip with the community, and more and more people started to come, and, you know, opioids and overdoses is in the news. It's in the news every day. You hear about it. And people want to come forward and do what they can to help our community. So we decided to change our name, and we changed it to the Saving Lives Task Force. We ended up broadening our whole mission to encompass all age groups. We started getting into treatment and recovery, and it was more reflective of what we were doing and helping to get in a lock zone out there, you know? And so now we have over 70, this actually is out of date, there's probably more like 80 or 85 people who actually are on the task force, and you can see some of the names up there, and that certainly isn't all of them. We have faith communities, Walgreens. John is on our task force now. He's gotten very involved in it. The Outer Banks Hospital, so a lot of, a lot of important people came to the table. Our mission, the Saving Lives Task Force, is a team of professionals and community members working toward the prevention of substance use disorders and increasing access and the availability of effective treatment for all of Dare County residents. Some of our accomplishments, the first year, we held a big community forum, and that was at Janus Pier on September 10th, 2015. We had 160 people attend, which, you know, from Dare County standards, that was a lot of people. I mean, that place was really packed that night, so we had good attendance. Our second one was focused on addiction and recovery, but that was held at First Flight High School. Then, the end of those two years, we kind of regrouped, and, you know, we wanted something that was more personable, where people felt comfortable coming forward and having an open discussion about their concerns. So we went to a town hall model, and last year, we had four town halls throughout the county, all related to the opioid crisis in one way or another. And in 2018, we're doing the same model, town halls. We held our first one on February 7th. That one was focused on the syringe exchange program in Dare and why it's important. We do support the syringe exchange program. Source Church administers the program, but we provide them a lot of support and supplies so they can do that. We also installed two drug- We also installed two drug, two drug box, drop-off boxes. One of them actually was put here at the Kill Devil Hills Police Department in November. And we put one in February 2016 in Naggs Head. There we go. Thank you. Some of the other things that we have done, we promoted the drug drop-off boxes. Sheriff's Department picking up, they will come to your house and pick up your medications. We've worked with Dare Casa to get naloxone in all the schools and all the health departments here. We were the first ones, first health school system in North Carolina to get naloxone in the schools. We've partnered with Source Church. We have held three provider education events. You know, we talk about the community and other, other happenings. But the, the big piece of it is the physician education and prescribing practices and educating these doctors. You know, it took us a long time to, to get where we're at now. It's going to take us a while to turn that around. So the provider prescribing and medication assisted treatment, we've held three of those. And we started a website, so that's kind of exciting. That's still in process. SavingLivesOBS.com. We've also started a, a Facebook page. We started our newsletter almost a year ago. This is it right here. We put it out on a quarterly basis. I have a stack of them back here, right back here on this table. Lots of good information in it. We do a different subject matter every quarter. And if you have any questions or you want more of these, I can get those for you. Some of our opportunities, we want to continue to build those protective factors with our kids. We got to get the kids early, not later when they're teenagers and they've gone down the wrong road. It's much harder to turn that back around. So Peer Power, we have that program in schools. Life Stories for Kids, kindergarten through grade two. We started that in September this year. We're piloting that in two elementary schools. Rachel's Challenge, Triple P, which is Positive Parenting Program. Children's Youth Partnership heads that off. And that helps parents be better parents to help their kids. And Children's Youth Partnership, we're also working with them on the Outer Banks Resiliency Initiative, ACE's Awareness, which is adverse childhood, childhood events. There is going to be more coming out about that. You'll hear more and more over the, the summer about that. And we're also working with the Detention Center. You've probably seen a lot of that in the news also too, in regards to, you know, 80% of the people that come into the jail system, they have mental health and substance use issues. So we're working with the Detention Center to get skillful programs for the inmates in there. Instead of them sitting around and wasting time, helping them get some skills that they need. That's going to help them when they get out. EMS, um, we started a partnership with EMS to start a naloxone community distribution program. Not going to talk too much about that. Jenny will be coming up in a few minutes to talk more about that. Another initiative that we're working on now is getting naloxone into the gap areas. You know, we have naloxone, all law enforcement has naloxone, the sheriff's department has it. So now we need to work on those areas in the community that need naloxone that don't have it. And they don't have the revenue source. For instance, the volunteer fire departments. Jenny and her team spent the last six months training all of them and getting them to carry naloxone, those first responders. And diversion, pill disposal bags, you know. So we don't throw those pills in the trash or flush them down the toilet. And we'll be working with the area pharmacies to hopefully, where they can start giving those away. When a prescription is written for an opioid, along comes a pill disposal bag with that. Our meetings are open to the public. They're the third Tuesday of every month at 3:00 in the admin building. Anyone is welcome to come. We welcome you to come. And, um, you know, we would like for everyone in all the towns to be a part of the solution and to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Jenny Collins, Chief Jenny Collins of EMS. She's going to come up next and talk more about naloxone.
Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come and, and talk with you this evening about this. It takes a widespread community effort to address the issue of the opioid epidemic that's not just here in Dare County, but throughout this nation. As Roxanna had talked about, all the various initiatives that are going on. I want to highlight a couple with the EMS department that we've been doing. Naloxone is not new in EMS. It's been there decades and decades and decades. And we administer it IV so that if we're on the scene when we start an IV, that is one of the medications that we do give via IV. And we titrate it or give amount based on the, the patient's condition because we have much more control over the medication that way. We also use it not just for opioid overdoses. There's sometimes you're on the scene, you know exactly what's happening. But if you find an unconscious patient and you have no information about them and there's no things that are around them that clue you in that this might be an overdose, it is part of what we call a differential diagnosis. So we could have a cardiac arrest or an unconscious, um, you know, person and we're not sure what it is. There are several things that we check. Naloxone is just one of those uses during that differential diagnosis that we can do. So when I give you some statistics, keep in mind, these are not just overdose situations because it's a wider variety in our field that we use it for. However, but the naloxone being available to all first responders is a proven effective strategy to be able to have these opioid overdose patients survive the incident. You can't get somebody into treatment if they don't survive. And sometimes it takes numerous attempts and numerous times of working with these patients to get them to the point where they realize they need to reach out and help. And that's where some of the fatigue that you see in the media about these particular issues comes from. It's just, you know, why do we keep doing this? Well, you're doing it because you need patients to survive, to be able to get into treatment programs. And the next speaker is going to talk a little bit about that. The issue is the sustainability of having naloxone available to all first responders. You know, thank goodness that the Saving Lives Task Force has, you know, received some donations and been able to purchase it. Our next speaker, Donnie Burnell, with the Sheriff's Office, is going to talk about the Harm Reduction Coalition and how naloxone became available for law enforcement agencies initially. But through the donations with the Saving Life Task Force, we were able to purchase some naloxone that we could outfit in all the fire departments across the county, including Kill Devil Hills. EMS went out, did the training for them and provided the kits. But we only had enough in that initial batch to outfit them with one kit. And the replacement of that kit, hopefully through additional donations, we'll be able to look at and have a process to do that. But again, it's based on the sustainability of those donations and through grant programs. And we all know that those don't last forever. With EMS, we budget and purchase our naloxone, just as with all of our other medications that we provide for patients. We're now moving into, through Harm Reduction Coalition, through an initiative with the North Carolina Office of EMS, that just last week I was delivered naloxone kits that we're going to be able to provide when we are at a, at-risk household and the patient's not going in for further treatment. Because if we get there and the patient is unconscious or in cardiac or respiratory arrest, most of the time in respiratory arrest, and we're able to revive them and they come back to full consciousness, they, and, and they know where they're at, they can make a decision whether or not they're going to be transported for treatment. We can't take anybody against their will. And in those types of situations, we will be able to leave a naloxone kit with that patient, with their family, because we recognize they're at risk to have this happen again, with information on the various programs that are available within the county, whether it's needle exchange, syringe exchange, counseling, you know, where they can go to get some help with their addiction. And last year, 2017, there were 52 patients that EMS was on the scene with. And we're on the scene with most of the ones that law enforcement or fire and rescue have administered naloxone. Out of those 52 patients, 20 of them occurred within the town of Kill Devil Hills. So roughly 38% of the cases that we responded to were within Kill Devil Hills. That doesn't mean the person lived here. It just means they had their incident here, their occurrence of that. For law enforcement, because I have some statistics on that, when we get on the scene, a total of 50 milligrams of Narcan had been delivered. And then we administered another 70 milligrams of Narcan to those patients. So at times, it takes multiple doses because of the amount of drug that they may have administered to themselves to keep them in that conscious state or in a, a state where they are able to breathe on their own and that we can further their treatment and transport. But again, remember, not all of those cases are opioid overdoses because it is given in that differential diagnosis situations. The important thing that I'd like to leave you with is talking about the sustainability of the naloxone, you know, kits, both, you know, for law enforcement and for fire and rescue. Because it's critically important that all those pieces of that puzzle come together and that first first responder that is on the scene have that availability with them. And we certainly want, and want to have that not available because it wasn't in somebody's budget or, you know, we ran out of grant money. So if there is something that the, the town is interested in doing and working with, Chief Tilly with Fire and Rescue, or, you know, the Kill Devil Hills Police Department, and making sure that that stays sustainable, I would absolutely encourage that. Because many times, the fire department or law enforcement happens to be on the scene before one of our medic units can get there and revive the patient. So next speaker, I'd like to introduce this special investigator with the Dare County Sheriff's Office, Donnie Burnell.
Thanks for having me. And I was told to keep it short. If anybody knows me, I'll do the very best I can. But I was told to talk about the drug trends in Dare County and North Carolina. And I was going to start with the opium wars of 1658. But I feel the time restraints have been given, maybe I'll cut it down a little quicker. Uh, I will tell you that in Dare County, like very much in North Carolina and, and pretty on par with most of the nation, law enforcement runs into marijuana more than anything else. Still, it's been that way for 40 years and it may keep being that way. There's a lot of substances in this world, however, and alcohol is one of them. But just counting illicit street substances and legitimate substances like pain medication that's used for illegitimate purposes, I'll stick to that. So we see marijuana a lot. It's usually small amounts. Occasionally, we get larger. About three months ago, we've got six pounds from one person. So marijuana is still prevalent. It has been from the 60s and it still is. Marijuana now is much different, however. People from the 60s, and I'm old enough to kind of remember some of the 60s, THC levels or the active ingredient in marijuana was about 3%. And you would hear people very often say smoking marijuana is like drinking a beer. And, and not to argue legalities or making it legal or not legal. Marijuana now is much different. It's been upgraded. Some of the fine students at some of our colleges have figured out a way to make the THC or the active ingredient in marijuana up to 25 to 30%. And if you cook it down in something called wax, it's 70% THC, which by weight is more effective than LSD. So you kind of start seeing marijuana has changed over the years and can be more serious. We have a real issue in Dare County where we have run into marijuana foodstuffs. Cookies and candies and lollipops, which are, are retail sold, not the marijuana brownies you see on TV and in the, in the movies and stuff, but like actually packaged. And the THC levels can be zero or 50%. You don't know what you're getting when you buy that kind of stuff. And we've had issues with young people with that in Dare County. Pain medication, that's kind of where this opioid issue started. That's where you see on TV, we started to abuse pain medications back in the late 80s and early 90s. Over 80% of all the hydrocodones sold in the world was sold in America. And 80% of everything sold in America was sold in Florida. And that was the epicenter of our opioid problem in North, in America and now into North Carolina. So pain medication is still the biggest killer of drug overdoses in North Carolina. Pain medications, prescription opioids still kill more people than any other drug in North Carolina. And we have about 1,300 drug overdoses every year. So we are still fighting the prescription drug issue from the partnerships that we've done in law enforcement and regulatory agencies and groups like Saving Life Task Force. We have done a better job on prescribing practices. That is changing. However, cutting back on prescription narcotics has also caused some of the problem we now see with heroin. I'm not saying better prescribing causes people to use heroin, but there are issues with people that started on prescription medications, became, got a substance abuse issue, could no longer get prescription narcotics because they're very expensive. If anybody's ever had a pain pill or a pain medication from a doctor, if it was a five-milligram hydrocodone, it costs $5 on the street. So every milligram is a dollar. In Dare County, it's a little higher. I don't know if that's tourist prices or what, because it comes across the bridge. But it's a little higher. Heroin is much cheaper, and that's our new trend, heroin. That's what you hear about. That's what we were, we've been chasing for about four or five years. Heroin was dumped on our street by the ton, by the drug cartels, very cheap. It was about $2 for a bag instead of, say, $30 for a 30-milligram hydrocodone pill. Or, I mean, oxycodone pill. So our trend became heroin. And heroin overdoses have spiked over the last three years, well over 500% increase in heroin overdoses. Which brings us to the final trend that we are dealing with all the time now, which is fentanyl. Fentanyl used to be a drug only for chronic cancer patients, chronic pain patients. It was on a patch. Most of us remember the fentanyl patches. That's not the fentanyl we're dealing with. We were dealing with fentanyl that's being made in clandestine labs. The strength can be much higher than the patches. Fentanyl is routinely said to be 50 to 100 times stronger than morphine per weight. So you can see the propensity of overdose when you're using fentanyl. Fentanyl is being mixed with heroin, cocaine, which we still see in Dare County, and some methamphetamine. Now with fentanyl, we tested, I do work with the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition also, which is a nonprofit organization and is much more in tune with the user population or street population. And we tested everything we could test in Wilmington for about a month period, meaning the syringes that are being used by the users, the spoons or cookers you see on TV, how they pull the substance up. And 80% of everything we tested had fentanyl in it. If it's that in Wilmington, it's probably that pretty much nationwide. So fentanyl is becoming the new, is and will be the new trend until another substance comes into play. And that's why you, groups like the Saving Lives Task Force is so important. Now I'll tell you, I guess to continue the trend of me being up here, naloxone. Three years ago, no law enforcement agency in North Carolina carried naloxone, not one. Today, we're getting close to 300, which makes us number two in the nation for percentage of law enforcement officers that carry it. And that's purely because of the relationships between law enforcement, harm reduction, and local communities. Because we all decided it was more important to save somebody's life than it was to do anything else. So we've put about 10, we've had about 10,000 drug overdoses that have been reversed with naloxone that's been provided by the North Carolina Harm Reduction in the last three years. It's 10,000 second chances. And as you'll hear people say, now we're starting to use multiple kits or applicators per call because the fentanyl is so strong. per call, because the fentanyl is so strong, one kit by itself won't bring a person back. So naloxone has really been a lifesaver, figuresally and practically. And in the Dare County Sheriff's Office, we've had approximately twenty-five reversals in the last two and a half years from the Sheriff's Department deputies, so it's important to keep. I will tell you that no matter how daunting this problem seems, and it is daunting, and we're fighting it from every angle we can. North Carolina is routinely considered one of the top states in being progressive against the opioid abuse problem in the nation, we're routinely invited to come speak at every national conference. And I would tell you, in North Carolina, you're fortunate that in Dare County, you have several of those experts live in your county, to be such a small county per capita compared to Charlotte and Raleigh and Lake Forest and places. So you have people here that are on the edge of it, and have been very progressive in trying to fight the problem. So I think with these kind of events, while it seems like I say the same thing over and over again, the more people that hear it, the more people that want to get involved and find a program they can get behind, and there's many, we'll do a better job at helping individuals, one at a time, stay alive. Thank you.
Welcome to Kill Devil Hills. We are pretty passionate about this, I think you've heard it from everybody here, I'm pretty passionate about it as well. The town has been progressive over the years from getting us automated external defibrillators, which I've had to use on several occasions, and this is our Narcan spray that we carry, all the officers, including our animal control officers, have it in their car. We're all trained to carry it, I've had to use it in the last six months on a young man, we were able to get him back, but circumstances later, it goes right back down the same path. So getting into this, Donnie came in and trained us, and like anything else, when I started in law enforcement, we weren't trained in any of this stuff. And in our police academies today, I teach through medical block, and we cover this, we cover the Narcan. And you would think some of the officers, the last thing they want to do is go out here and somebody just overdosed, they were going to respond to and be a little adverse on giving this, but believe it or not, all of our officers have been receptive to it because they have seen it, we respond there, that person is literally dead, they're clinically dead, almost being biologically dead, and we administer this stuff, within seconds we see signs of life come back. And you've been there and saved somebody's life, that I can't describe the feeling. So our officers, our frontline officers that are there, we have to, we're dispatched, we have to get there before fire and EMS, because the scene is unsafe, so that's our job, we're dispatched first by protocol, we get there, make sure that scene is safe, we call in EMS and fire, so we're there always first, foremost, to get the drug, so seconds to minutes is what saves lives. So we are seeing it, unfortunately, here in Kill Devil Hills and all across the nation. But thank you to the town, the town manager, the police chief, the board of commissioners, for being proactive way of getting the A.D.s in the cars for southern cardiac arrest and having the Narcan, because we are seeing it, you have them fill out forms, and I get them every month, and every time somebody uses it, I get an email, and I replenish that Narcan by the officer's hand, so we'll be glad to answer any questions, we're passionate about it, we're here to save lives, we're first responders, and that's what we do. So thank you for being on the forefront of allowing us to have this, because it is saving lives, it's probably the fastest way to save lives.
Questions or comments?
Couple things. First off, thank you to all presenters coming out tonight, very powerful and informative presentation by everybody. I'd like to invite everybody here to attend Saving Lives Task Force meetings. I went, I wasn't, I heard about it, and I went, because I was curious, and it floored me, I learned so much about the issues facing our community, and it's moving to see all the different voices, people, and hear all the different voices of people trying to really help. So I would highly encourage anyone to go, every voice is appreciated, and I think it will be something people will enjoy. Before we move on, I know the time is strange here, I wanted to ask, where does Kill Devil Hills Police Department or Fire Department get the naloxone from? Who supplies our first responders now?
We got started through Dare Casa about two and a half years ago, and Donnie came in and got us trained, got it into, did the training for it, and we've had it, and up to this day, we've been getting doses through Dare Casa Coalition Against Substance Abuse.
So I want to kind of make sure I'm correct on this, right now, first responders, not just in Kill Devil Hills, but also in Dare County, naloxone is being obtained and distributed on a donation and grant basis, there really isn't a set aside funding for this. Now I guess we're kind of, so it's not a continual established budget item. One thing I like, you know, I worry that, talking about fentanyl and heroin and other things, is the potential is there for one day, especially peak summer season, where demand could outpace supply, and we could potentially have first responders in Kill Devil Hills be out, we may not have naloxone when they need it. I've given this a lot of thought, especially since my time in the task force, and I want to just ask, you know, all of our first responders in town, when it comes time for budgeting, let's put just a little bit of money aside to purchase naloxone if the case ever comes up where we run out a little short. And I want to make sure us as a board, we do all we can to make sure that every first responder in Kill Devil Hills always has naloxone.
I don't think you have to worry about that, as long as I'm here anyway, but we've got a proactive police chief and fire chief, and EMS is here. The only downside of the naloxone, Narcan, is that it does have an expiration date on it. So we currently, I have about seven kits on hand now. Now, being able to project when we're going to use these is just like the wind blowing, it seems like when the bad, and Donnie can tell you, when the bad batch of drugs hit the streets, I'll go weeks and we don't have to use it, thank the Lord. And then we come in, and one day I'm using two doses, two days go by, I'm using another dose. So we keep it up, we have the money, the chief and I are going to make sure it's there, but I can't put ten, fifteen doses on the shelf, and then it goes out, because I've got some right now on the shelf that's been out, what I'm bringing you here are these that expired about six months to a year. So there is a life expectancy, the shelf life on it, but rest assured, we're going to keep it in our hands.
I will say, and Chief Tilly can probably speak to this better, I think the fire departments do not have that budget holder, that medication had been provided through Saving Lives Task Force, and the sustainability of that, you know, if we could guess that, I'd know the lottery numbers too, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, thank John.
Thank you all so much for coming out and presenting this evening.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Winley for bringing this together, he's done an excellent job of putting it together and getting all the people here to enlighten us, and thank you very much, John.
We will move on now then to item number three under Presentations, and welcome Dorothy Hester, she's the Public Information Officer for Dare County, and.
Good evening to y'all, and thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be here, I am here with Bobby Dobbs, he's behind me here, he's the Channels Manager for Current TV, y'all may remember Current TV as GovEdTV, that's what we were known as for years. But we appreciate a few minutes to let you know about the local programming, we've, since Bobby has been our manager for a little over four years, we've made some great improvements, and we want to let everybody know about those, and take advantage of the opportunities to watch the programming that's available there. It's not only on, for Spectrum customers anymore, it's now available, our programming is available online, anyone, anywhere in the world with a computer. And I think that's greatly appreciated, particular, well, there's a lot of folks here who don't subscribe to cable anymore, so they appreciate being able to go online, but also non-tenant property owners, I think it's real beneficial for them, and we've gotten some great feedback about the ability for them to do that. It's just last year that we began marketing the channel as Current TV, it's a new name, a new look, but we continue to strive to offer programming that's valuable to the people who live here and vacation here. We have a governing committee, Mayor Davies serves as your representative, she's very engaged, she does a great job, she's served as chairman, and I also want to mention Michael, he's your primary staff contact, and I would have to say that the town of Kill Devil Hills is one of the more engaged with what we're doing, so we really appreciate that, because we're partners, and it helps when everybody is participating. So I'll go ahead and introduce Bobby Dobbs, like I said, he is the Channels Manager, we have the government channel and the education channel, and he's managing those channels on a day-to-day basis, and he's going to bring you up to speed on where we are and what we're doing. So thank you.
Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you, it's good to be here, appreciate the time you've given us to talk a little bit about what we do, and hopefully we can encourage you to use it, the service is there for you to use. First, I'm going to start with, what is Current TV? Well, Current TV is a collaboration, and that collaboration is designed to provide quality informational programming through two channels, Current TV Government, Current TV Education. These are our member entities that you see there, it includes Dare County, all of the incorporated towns, and three educational entities, the Dare County Schools, and College of the Albemarle, and Coastal Studies Institute. So all of these groups work together to provide programming that you see on Current TV, on either the government or the education channel. We have two channels on Charter Spectrum, Channel 191 is the government channel, and then Channel 198 is the education channel. They operate 24/7, 365 days a year, unless the Charter Spectrum service is down for some reason, we are providing programming there on those two channels. Each channel is streamed over the internet, as Dorothy was saying, 24/7, it's an exact duplicate of what you see on the Charter Spectrum channels, and it's accessible through our website, www-currenttv.org. We also, at that website, offer an extensive video on-demand feature, where you can go and look, search for individual video segments that perhaps you saw when you were watching the channel, or perhaps you've heard about or seen, and would like to go check out further, you can go to our video on-demand feature on our website and see that one single video or many videos if you choose to do that. We also have a Facebook page that we launched, and we currently are somewhere near a thousand views of that, or likes of that Facebook page. We also have a Current, or YouTube channel, we took the old two YouTube channels, there was one for government, one for education, we've discontinued those, they're still up, but there's not been much, hasn't been any new material added to those. We combined those two channels into a Current TV YouTube channel, which houses videos for both education and government. Little bit about how we are funded, I'll try to go through this pretty quickly, because it does get kind of complicated, but each participating member pays a thousand dollars annually, town of Kill Devil Hills contributes a thousand dollars. What that does is it provides them and the other entities access to provide content to the channels, and representation on the Government and Education Access Channels Committee, they get one representative. Each participating member has access to a fully equipped studio, which is located in our offices in the Dare County Administration Building in Manio, local program development initiative grants that help provide programming for the channel, and support from Current TV staff. Each governmental entity receives a quarterly distribution from the state of North Carolina. This is based on cable and satellite subscribers in the state, if you subscribe to one of those services, a piece of that bill that you pay goes to the state of North Carolina as a tax or fee, and then that money is collected by the state, and then for certified PEG channels, public education government channels, that money is redistributed back out to those entities. Here in Dare County, we combine the money that comes to all of our entity members, and that's the money that is used to budget for the operation of the two channels, and that's what I manage. That's just a technical explanation of the, of how this is, how this distribution's figured, you're welcome to go to the NCDR website and read for yourself all about it, but basically they base it on the number of channels that are certified in the state, and then it's also reflective of some other factors, and then they get a percentage figured out, and that formula is what gets distributed back to the entities. Current TV maintains an office in the Administration Building of Dare County and the Public Relations Office in Manio, there are two employees, me is the Channels Manager, and Skip Wallace, who is a producer that works with us, we are considered Dare County employees, and are housed in that building, but we essentially work for all of the entities that we service. Got a brief video here, we may have to switch to the video in another window, I don't, couldn't get it to play from the power, yeah, knocked out, yeah, no, no, that's not it. Okay, it went away, okay, well, we'll just talk about the website. This is our homepage on our website, if you kind of just scroll down that a little bit, you'll see, we have the video on demand that you can get to, there's a Current, there's a link to each of our web streams there, the live stream for government and education, there's a link to our schedules, both government and education, so you can see exactly what's on, little blurb about us, and then you can see the latest things that we've uploaded to the site, and a link to our Facebook page as well. If you go back up to the top real quick, I'll just go through these headings at the top, you can also get to these on the top of the page, and for the, on the video on demand section, there are videos, they're categorized by entity or by topic, in other words, Kill Devil, the town of Kill Devil Hills has a section that has all of their videos in it. So if you want to find out everything that town of Kill Devil Hills is doing, you can go there and see videos about all those fascinating things that they're engaged in. Watch Live takes you to the web streams, program schedules takes you to the program schedules, and then there's a way to contact. We also feature a video, this changes from, you know, week to, every now and then we'll change this out, and focus on a particular interesting video from one of our entities. This happens to be the new recycling video that the town of Southern Shores has done, it's pretty entertaining, actually, and you should go there and check it out sometime, if you want to learn about that. And I would just encourage you in closing to go to our website, spend some time there, and get to know what's there, and see how you might be able to use it as you go about your daily life, living as a citizen here in Dare County. We also do cover all of the meetings, all the entities bring their meetings to us, and we run those on the channel, they each air four times, and we set aside time for that, this meeting will likely be on probably Sunday, I would imagine. So that's another way to keep in touch, and you can also kind of peek in on how the other towns are doing with their meetings, it's pretty interesting sometimes. That's all I have, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Thank you so much, Bobby. Any questions for Bobby or Dorothy?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out and sharing this with us. Okay, next I'd like to welcome Ryan Henderson, the Executive Director of the Outer Banks YMCA, to report on our partnership, welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, it's a pleasure to be here, and just want to give a brief update of what we've been able to accomplish over the past year, and highlight some of the program activities that we are able to do at the YMCA. and highlight some of the program activities that we are able to do at the YMCA. Clicker here. But before we get going, oops, sorry. Before we get going, just want to give a brief update. I know many of you, but I don't know all of you. So I'll, I'll just kind of fill you in on my history. I grew up in Raleigh, North Carolina, and come from a family of seven boys. I am next to the youngest and grew up with a love of basketball. And as evidenced from my pictures here, this picture right here is my son in my sixth-grade basketball uniform. Amazing that he, that I kept it, that I didn't lose it, and he still fit in it. So it was perfect. But I moved to Outer Banks in 2004 after I graduated from college. My wife, we met in college, got married. She was from the area here, so when she presented the plan to move to the beach, it was hard to turn down. And so we ended up here. And I worked in the mortgage industry until 2008. And then became a stay-at-home dad for a few years. Got into coaching, got into teaching, and just really fell in love with that, that aspect of a career path for me. So I started at the YMCA in 2011 as a camp director. I came in two weeks before camp started and had, had a great summer. From that point, I took on a position as a Youth and Family Programs Director, where I oversaw youth sports. And youth sports was probably one of my favorite things to do there. Youth soccer. If you want to have some fun, come out on a Saturday morning and try and chase around, 40, three- and four-year-olds after soccer ball. It is a great exercise and a lot of fun. But from that position, I have moved into a role as our membership director. And then a year and a half ago, I took over as our Director of Operations and currently the Executive Director. So if there is a job at the Outer Banks YMCA, I have just about done it, including cleaning toilets. Have not taught an exercise class because I wouldn't be very good at that. But I love what I do, very passionate about the work that we do here at the YMCA. Some of the highlights that I just want to touch on briefly from, from last year. What you'll see on the bottom and on the top left of the screen here is a swim team that we began at, at the beginning of two, end of 2016, beginning of 2017. We identified a need for some recreational swimming. We had a competitive swim team in the area, but there's a gap for those kids who, who weren't really sure they loved swimming yet, but were interested in it. So we started our team with 30 kids and, and to that, and then, almost gave away my clue. And we've been able to grow. What you see here on the bottom is the first meet that the Outer Banks YMCA has hosted for the swim team. We had four teams come in from out of the area. And it was, it was a wonderful sight. A lot of energy felt in the building when swimming is going on. The Top Metal is a program that we do every, every quarter, three times a year. So it's January, April, and September during our membership campaigns. We also offer a Battle of the Schools program. So the, the members are able to earn tickets for their, for their workouts, for joining, for referring people. And they drop them into the schools of their choice. This program's been going on for about three years. And for the first three years, Nagshead Elementary School won every single one of our contests. And maybe it just goes there right across the street. So we do a $300 donation to the school that wins. This year, we switched it up, so we're going to spread the wealth a little bit. So in January, we highlighted a middle school and First Flight Middle School won. And April, we'll highlight a high school. And then in September, we'll do an elementary school. So it's just one of the ways that we're able to give back and support the education in our community. Various partnerships that we've been able to have. We have a great partnership with the town of Kill Devil Hills who has supported us. And we're very thankful for that. We're able to collaborate with many community partners in the area. The Special Olympics, we host their swim team. They practice twice a week. We host their swim meets. They had their very first swim meet two Sundays ago, where they had teams come in from out of the area on a Sunday morning. It was just, it was wonderful. Children Youth Partnership, we, we host the Triple P Positive Parenting Program at the YMCA. Foster Care, we've done foster, foster parents training. Sylvan hosts, we host Sylvan in our facility. Friends of Youth comes in and uses the facility for, for their youth. And then we also, Sporting Events, who are up next, have a, we have a great partnership with them and we're thankful for them. Do want to highlight Special Olympics here. So this is a very, very special program that we have going on. The top picture is from three years ago. And the bottom two pictures are from the swim meet that I just referenced from two weeks ago. So it was, it was a great opportunity for our athletes who, who are practicing every, twice a week to come and, and be able to highlight their skills and what, what they're able to do. So my presentation now turns into more of an interactive presentation. So I'm going to ask for feedback from you guys. So this is a, here's a question for you. So in 2017, how many children attended our summer camp program? And there's no wrong answer, well, there is wrong answers, but just get as close as you can. And I'll open up to everybody. If you have a guess, we offer 11 weeks of summer camp. This is non-duplicated, so I'll get to you. We have, we probably had 1,000 sessions of summer camps that, that kids participated in last year. Any guesses on how many kids came?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six hundred.
Six fifty.
Six fifty. Anybody else? So the answer is 171. Your questions are right when you think about these. 171 came to 11, if they came 11 times, that's 1,200 kids that, that came. Forty-four percent of the kids that came to our summer camp are from Kill Devil Hills. So it's by far the highest percentage that we have. Next question up is how many kids participated in a youth sports program for us last year? We offer four sessions of youth sports. Little kickers, we do twice a year because it's so much fun. Little dribblers is basketball. And then we offer a T-ball. This is mainly three and four-year-olds. Meredith can't answer because she knows all, she knows all the answers. Any, any guesses?
Two fifty.
Two fifty. It's pretty close. One fifty-four. One fifty-four. Again, it's, it's three and four-year-olds is what we focus on. Parks and Rec does a great job with the older kids and, and we let them have that. So we focus on, on Pee-wee sports. Again, 41% from Kill Devil Hills. Swim lessons. Swim lessons that we taught in 2017.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. Good guess. What up, anybody else? Thought I heard something.
Three hundred.
Three hundred. That was close. Two seventy-five. Two seventy-five. And here's the thing about swim lessons last year. We only offered swim lessons through June. We have our Aquatics Director leave. And so that's only the first six months of the year. So 275 kids, we were able to teach how to swim and improve their ability and keep them safe in the water. Again, 39% from Kill Devil Hills. All right, this was just in here for fun. The only mammal that cannot jump is an elephant. It would have done. All right, and then the swim team we discussed about. So how many children swam on our swim team in 2017? He's going for it.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven? Is that what you said? Eighty-two. That was pretty damn close. Nice job. So we, we have done, the only advertising we've done for our swim team is within the center. We haven't sent anything out to the schools. We started off with 30 kids. We're up to right around 60 kids right now, many of them swim every month. And this is just a wonderful thing that we've been, we've been able to do. We've expanded to include a competitive side as well as we also do U.S. swimming. We have a swimmer who qualified for the championships meets, who is a junior at First Flight and will be attending those in Williamsburg next weekend. How many members belong to the Outer Banks Family YMCA?
Thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred. That's a good guess.
Yeah, forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred? You work for us, so that's a, fifty, fifty-seven hundred. Fifty-seven. Look at this number. Forty-six percent from Kill Devil Hills. And that's pretty significant. So, good job. All right, financial support that was given in 2017 from the Outer Banks Family YMCA to the Outer Banks community. So for those who don't know, we offer an Open Doors program. So if you can't afford your membership and come in and tell us that, we will base our, your, your membership on a sliding scale on the revenue that you make, your taxable gross income. So very proud of the program. And any guesses on the number here? Four hundred forty-one thousand. Right, that's, that, that is significant. If you want to be a member at the Y, we'll take you. Right? No matter, no matter in what other place, there are many places, but very proud of the fact that you can come in the door and we want you to be there. The banner that you see here, if you go down the hallway of the YMCA, there are banners that hang there for people, for organizations and people who donate at the level of $1,000 or more. This is my banner here, not to, not to brag, but to show you that I care about what we do. Our staff raises over $6,000 from their own paychecks every year to support our Open Doors program, which is, which is pretty phenomenal. People work at the YMCA not for the money, but because they love it. For them to be able to, to be willing to give back is, is just, just great. And I have a quick video that I just want to share with you guys. If you click on that, it'll take you to the link. Cross my fingers here. What's your name?
Glenn Williams.
Glenn Williams?
Yep.
Glenn, do you remember when you first joined the Y?
Not thinking of Eddie.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay. What brought you to the Y?
A Y.
What was it?
A Y.
So Glenn's relationship with the YMCA started back in 2003 when he was a member of the Adult Developmental Activity Program. And they, what they did was it was a partnership with the YMCA. They had a group of individuals with mental or developmental delays or disabilities that would come into the YMCA and use it. In 2009, the, unfortunately, the Albemarle Mental Health Commission went away. And so the Adult Developmental Activity Program also went away. And it was at that time that Glenn actually became, went on his own and became an Open Door member here of, of the YMCA. Were it not for the Open Doors program that we have at the YMCA, there's no way that Glenn could have a membership here with us. Being on a, on a fixed income, if, if we did not offer some sort of assistance for Glenn, he'd be stuck in his house all day. Glenn's routine is the same every day. So he checks in at our front desk, asks him to play racquetball. When they say no, he pops over to my office and asks me if I'm available at that time. If I'm not available then, he'll go into the locker room, get changed, go into the hot tub, which he calls swimming. After swimming in the hot tub, he goes into the workout room where he does two exercises. He gets on the bike to ride for a little bit, and then he pumps his biceps because that's what he likes to do. He logs his active tracks. Then we'll, we'll either play after that or, or he'll come in and chat with me for a little bit before he gets picked up.
He was a free, right, he rocked the ball.
One day, he just happened to stop by and ask me to, if I wanted to play racquetball with him. I thought, sure, sure, I'll play racquetball with you. We get in the racquetball court and I had played before. And I asked Glenn, do you know how to play? And he said, yes. And so, okay, explain to me how we play. And so he said, well, we'll start playing. And if you can get the ball past me, you get three points. And I thought, that's great, that should be easy enough. And he said, if I can get hit by the ball, I get two points. And so we started our, our game. What I've come to realize though is that as I take the time on a daily basis to spend with Glenn, it, it makes a difference in my day and in my life. The Y changes lives. As much as we give to them, we give back in, in the same amount of love and development. In, in a world where Glenn may get lost in the transition or he may not stand out, the Y makes him feel important. Everybody loves him. Everybody says hi to him. Sorry.
The Y, she has me happy. The friends, the Y, they're happy to hear.
So, so Glenn's my buddy. We played racquetball this morning. And I won today, first time in a week, I think. And he wins more times. He's quicker than I thought he was. But that, the video just captures what we're able to do at the Y, right? So we have, we have a great facility. We have great programming. But the true magic that happens at the YMCA happens in those everyday stories where people come in. It starts with our coffee club for older adults who, who come in and drink coffee together and enjoy the time. It starts with Glenn, who comes in, who gets out of his house and comes and plays racquetball. And truly, Glenn believes he's the boss now. He tells my staff they can't go home. And when he wears his tie, he means serious, you know, serious business. But I'm just grateful to be a, be a part of that. So just a, a quick recap of what we discussed today is our membership. The number that's not up here, and this, this KDH number that I want to share with you, the percentage of members that are on Open Doors at the YMCA is thirty-six, thirty-six percent. So when you come in, one out of every three people are receiving some sort of assistance to be there, which is a huge number and a huge need in our area. And we're just grateful to be a part of it. And I love what I do, I'm passionate about what I do. If I can do anything for, for anybody who's here, more and more than willing to do that. So thank you for your time. I'll open up the questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Ryan, I have to tell you, you know, you started off by saying you have a love for basketball. So just a quick, quick story. Last night Wyatt went and watched. You were on the team. There's a, I forgot what it was called. It was a basketball.
Slam Dunks for school. That was it.
Yeah, so it was for the Dare Education Foundation. He was so excited. The first thing he said when he walked in the house last night was, did you know that Ryan can dunk? So excited about that.
I'll keep secrets.
He was very impressed, very impressed.
It was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thanks, Ryan.
Our last but not least presentation. Welcome Ray Robinson and Jenny Ash with the Outer Banks Sporting Events. Welcome to you both.
Thank you all so much for having us. Jenny's actually been nice enough to let me start out because I've had laryngitis all this week. So we'll see how long I can last. As you guys know, Outer Banks Sporting Events has been around more than a decade and been a light in the community in ways of economic development as well as donations to our two beneficiary foundations. Dare Education Foundation, which you just spoke about there, Slam Dunks, and Outer Banks Relief Foundation.
Can I interrupt for one second? This, Sheila, I have to tell you that this morning when I got to work, Ray popped into my office and said, did you know Ryan dunked last night?
I did, I did. I'm very, I'm very glad that he did because, and, and he'll, he'll be modest in not saying this. Before the game, I said, Brian, you gotta dunk on these guys. And, and he did, so very, very good. Even afterwards, the guys were still talking about it when we took him out to dinner after. So some of you may or may not know about our mission. Our mission is four-part, to organize and promote sports competitions. Also, to do this around healthy living, which obviously you guys know about our marathon and half marathon and other events. And also to provide financial resources for the Relief Foundation and Dare Education Foundation while contributing economic impact to the Outer Banks. One of the things that we announced this past year was our $50 million economic impact to the Outer Banks folks. That's accommodations, that's food on tables, that's keeping our folks working during the shoulder season. Okay, now let, let's talk about how that breaks down. How do we get to that number? So last year, we had just over 7,500 runners come to our events. That was a 5% increase over 2016 in our full marathon amount. Those folks brought about 3.2 people with them. So that gave us 24,000 total participants that came out. In addition, most of those folks were females. 55% female, 45% male. And our average age range is about 35 to 45, which is, is, is great. We have everyone from a one-year-old doing our fun run. So I think last year, Flying Pirate, we had an 85-year-old woman finish our 5K and she did not finish last. So she's pretty remarkable. Visitors, as you can see, 23% of the folks who come are first-time visitors to the Outer Banks. So where are these folks coming from? Well, you see each one of our races down at the bottom. And you see 47 states represented Flying Pirate, 28 states represented Storm the Beach, 29 at our triathlon, and 47 at the marathon. We have folks from all 50 states and this year, 18 countries. Last year, we were at 12. Jenny pulled the, the numbers and the demographics and I said, oh man, I, I didn't see Norway and I didn't see some of these other ones. So very, very happy to say that we, we have an international presence as the Outer Banks. And we couldn't do that without KDH. Okay, so our races encourage healthy lifestyles. Now I'll let Jenny kind of speak to some of this.
First of all, thank you Mayor Davies and board commissioners for having us. We always like coming and not only hearing the other presentations, but realizing the partnerships. Before I start on this, I just wanted to say, as I sat through the other three or four folks that stood up, I realized that we have some sort of connection with everyone. I mean, not only your town staff. You guys are sort of the hub or the midsection of both of our point-to-point runs, which is, you know, always sort of the point to get to is to encircle the monument and you feel like you're halfway there. And your staff is a pleasure to work with in permitting and everything like that, as well as, you know, the YMCA, the National Park Service, and Jenny Collins and her EMS staff. So as I sat here today, up until this point, I realized how many tie-ins there are when we do come out and discuss all the things that we all do. So thanks again for helping facilitate all that throughout the year. So the registration. So the registrants, we do have, like Ray mentioned, the presence of, you know, all over the country and out of the country that might make up our participant base. And that is, speaks volumes to what we have to offer here as a community that a lot of people like to make it a destination race and plan around an active vacation. And locally, the Outer Banks Hospital sponsors a Couch to 5K. I think that's changing up a little bit, but reflective of 2017, we had a lot of folks. Assistant Chief Harris had his bib number right on his uniform and he was, I have a great picture of you. I should frame that for you because that was a great representation of community involvement and tag team and keeping an eye on everybody and participating yourself, so that was fantastic.
And I didn't finish last.
Right. You had a good spring in your step, I do remember that. Good representing.
Sure, I can speak to it.
Well, I didn't know if you had already done it.
No, no, I can speak to it. So as we were talking about the $50 million impact, the question is, okay, how much of that money is going back to our beneficiary charities and things of that nature? So in 2017, we were able to give more than $50,000 to each one of our two beneficiary organizations. And that brings us to a total generated since 2010 of more than a million dollars to each charity. That's major and it's only because of you guys that we've been able to do this. Let's talk about some of the impact of that. So Dare Education Foundation, as you guys know, has worked hard to do teacher housing as well as grants to school groups and things of that nature. I think a huge proponent of the ADDA program and some others. Relief Foundation, I have to tell you this story, I've only been here a year, as most of you know. And I got a chance to go down to a florist down in Mania. And it was before an event that was going on and I was helping out. And she started to tell me a story about her husband passing away. And the Relief Foundation was able to help her out. And many of our stories we're not able to tell, but she told me, please share my story when you go out and talk. Husband passed away, the Relief Foundation was able to help out with several thousand dollars to help her and her children get back on their feet. And she worked and had started her own florist shop. Very, very proud of that story and very proud of that lineage for her and her family. Those are the things that you guys helping us out and coming out and running with us and volunteering and working allows to happen in our community. We're very, very proud of it. Okay, here's the huge number, the most important number here is we talk about KDH. $1.5 million in economic impact this year in KDH. That's a little over 1,000 participants who stayed here when they visited Outer Banks. They brought 3.2 guests with them for a total of a little over 4,600 visitors. And we work out the per diem at $75 per day. And the average person stays about 2.7 days, which gives us a per diem of 950,000 and accommodations of over $600,000. So to date estimated for the 2017 season, $1.5 million in KDH. Guys, that's 100% because of you guys, 100%. So what to look forward to? We have Running the Leprechaun coming up this weekend, which is great. We've had great attendance in the past, it's something that we inherited last year. And you also see our other events here and scheduled. We will continue to partner with you guys and bring folks here to KDH as well as talk about all the great attractions, just to see the Wright Brothers Memorial and things of that nature. It's been great for our folks. I can't tell you enough how many folks come out for the first time and they look up and they go, "This is where flights started." And of course we tell them that it is KDH, not Kitty Hawk.
So we'll certainly open up to any questions or concerns or comments. I did want to make a mention of a fantastic result of something that happened before I was race director and before Ray was here. It's been five years now. Speaking of the monument, there was a gentleman that passed away at the start of our 5K. And it wasn't race-related, it was before the race even started. It was just a terrible, you know, act of God. But his daughter called me about six months ago and said, "Our whole family's coming back to run the 5K this year and we're gonna put a, you know, in memory album on the bib." And it just seems like it came full circle to, you know, you always wonder how they're coping and how they're handling things. And they sent me a eulogy to pull from to make some announcements at the start and just really embracing coming back and looking at the positives that running and community events and all those types of things gave that gentleman before he passed. So just an update on that because I'm sure you're all aware of when that happened. And, you know, just to have a positive spin on the ending of that is fantastic. But again, yes, I'm the race director, so I'm logistics, core stuff, volunteers, all that good stuff. And working for Ray's been fantastic, he's our executive director, like he said, as of about a year or so. If you have questions for either of us, our emails are here and they're easy to remember, but I'll certainly answer anything now too.
Great, Jenny, Ray, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions on this?
Thank you very much.
Any questions? All right, well, thanks again for the opportunity and coming up on some good races, so hope to see you out there.
Great, thank you so much. We will keep moving then onto new business, item number one, and welcome Ken Wilson and Julian DeBees. Welcome gentlemen. Do a beach nourishment post-construction survey presentation, so welcome. Oh, I'm sorry, Jenny, did you have one more thing?
I do, I'm so sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't need to jump off.
No, you were invited, I was a little bit on the out. So I just wanted to present, each year we have a local artist create a piece of artwork and, excuse the bags, but you know the weather when I was coming in. So we would like to just present you with this year, 2017's artwork for the marathon. And it's called Dauntless Resolution. And Ben Miller was the artist and he came up with this graphic that's, you know, different every year, but it's a nice color scheme and wanted to present this for your wall. And I noticed you've got a pretty good collection to add to, so thanks for displaying and everything you guys do.
Thank you, that's beautiful, that's great, nice additions. That's fine, thank you so much.
Thank you.
How's it going everyone? A pleasure to be back. My name's Julian DeBees from Athlum. And Ken and I were up here this summer for the beach nourishment project. And we did a post-construction survey in December and just here to kind of talk about the results. I'm sure you'll remember, a lot of sand, it was enough to fill dump trucks from here to Key West and back. So we'll just go ahead and take a look at where that sand is moving. This was day two of construction in Kill Devil Hills, right at Helga Street. Day 28, Avalon Pier in the background, kind of coming together. We had three dredges working on the project. And then what we, we'll kind of start to talk about what we see now. And something that we had shown a lot during construction, before construction and all the meetings was this profile equilibration where we have a more of a rigid template that we build. And that Mother Earth, there's Mother Earth, there's waves, just that sand redistribution. We just talked about it a lot at the meetings. And with that survey data, we see a lot of that sand that is moving offshore and building those sandbars. So the examples we had shown were these pre-project conditions where you have your profile. Then you go ahead and build your beach template. And then through that equilibration, you have some of that sand migrate offshore to build up those sandbars. And so you have your design, you have your erosion rates that you incorporate into your design. And you're left with sand both on the beach and sand migrating and building those sandbars. And so a couple photos of that process happening. This was a few months in after the completion of the Kill Devil Hills project, that same area that we were looking at before, just north of Avalon Pier. This is south, closer to Sea Ranch, looking north here at Avalon Pier. But we see those, basically that sand, which is basically moving offshore with those larger waves and those storms. So, and what we'll notice here, and I'll go back to this one, but here you see a lot of the waves breaking right on the beach. And as we progress, we see those waves moving farther and farther offshore like we see in this photo, which again was something that was taught, we just mentioned a lot of how that, those sandbars are gonna form, what's that, what that's doing to the wave action. And this was last month. And again, it's, you can see those waves breaking offshore again, and this is Helga Street looking south. So in 2017, or December 2017, we went ahead and conducted those post-construction surveys, all for the beach, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores and Duck. We swam out profiles and we also came in with a boat to overlap. So we have survey data every 1,000 feet throughout the beach areas. And so what we're looking at here is we take those surveys, we plot them out to compare. We have our blue line, our pre-construction surveys, what was there before the project. That green is what was constructed immediately after construction. So you'll notice again that it's more of a rigid, flat berm, slope down. And then this red line is the post-construction survey. And so again, this was built immediately after construction. And for reference, that black line is basically the water line. And so above the water line here, we see a lot more sand, we see a wider beach. And what we see now is that sand, similar to how those sketches I'd shown earlier, we see that sand migrating offshore. And so there weren't any sandbars before here. And now we have this large block of sand immediately offshore. And again, that's why we're seeing those waves break so far offshore, that accumulation of material. And this was, this is one of the profiles between Fourth and Fifth Street. But looking at, looking at all of them, they all look just like this with that sandbar accumulation. The post-construction report, the survey report will be finished in the next couple of weeks. So you could look through the rest of the profiles as well to see this. But, and again, that reduction in wave energy. So those waves are breaking hundreds of feet farther offshore. That wave energy, by the time it hits the beach, has dissipated. And so you're getting less and less erosion due to those sandbars. And again, First Street, exact same thing, just wanted to show another example. That green line again is showing what was built immediately after construction. And that red line, this is just the December conditions. And just again, important to remember, you know, anything above that black line, you know, you're gonna see walking out on the beach. But anything below, you're not. And so just important to remember that, you know, that sand is migrating. And then as we have our summer months come back, a lot of that sand comes back as well farther up the shore. But when you have, you know, the winter months and the large storms, that beach is protecting itself. So it builds that sandbar so that those waves do break. And then as the conditions, you get smaller waves in the summer, a lot of that sand migrates back up on the beach. So another kind of interesting thing that we noticed specifically during the construction of Kitty Hawk. So we had those three storms, Irma, Jose and Maria in September. Kill Devil Hills was completed, Kitty Hawk was still going on. And what we saw, Kitty Hawk anyway, some of the sand fencing that had been constructed, which is similar to what we saw in Kill Devil Hills over the last couple storms, which is completely covered after those hurricanes. And just a reminder of how much sand gets moved around with those large storms. And again, the importance of that, and I'll scroll back to this green arrow here. But just seeing that the actual berm we built at plus six, now it's several feet higher. And that's why you see that sand fencing getting covered. And we also noticed it here in Kill Devil Hills with these latest storms as well. So again, the dry beach portion is narrower, but it's also higher in elevation. And we also have that sand moving offshore and building those sandbars like we had talked about before and during the project. And the last thing, just the bar areas as well. So this is the bar area A that was used for this project. These are red areas are highest elevation or most sand. This is the same bar area, post-construction survey, so you kind of see where a lot of the sand was taken. And this was the difference plot. So blue areas, again, most sand taken. So a lot of the bar area not used, you know, really staying within a cut or two there. But just something interesting to take a look at. So yeah, just, there's an established beach maintenance plan. And so moving forward, just important to continue with that management, the annual monitoring. Surveys are conducted in the spring, so we'll be able to compare those from year to year, take a look at volume changes, shoreline changes, see where that sand is migrating. Also, renourishment intervals, right now it's estimated at about five years, so we'll be able to update those and take a look at those. And then just continue to track volumes. Sand, like I had mentioned, moves offshore, builds those sandbars. But it also, it can also go offshore and come back to what's called the depth of closure. And so as long as it stays within this envelope of down to 24 feet, it always has the chance of coming back on to the beach. And so again, the sandbars that I had mentioned, you know, migrate back up, they migrate offshore. And so just tracking those volumes above that depth of closure. And then sand fencing, planting, continue to monitor, continue to install as needed. We have the spring, summer coming up for planting. Yeah, just continue to monitor that. Any questions?
Is it better for surfers now or?
It should be, with those waves breaking out there, it should be.
I kind of thought so.
We're pretty good last week. We saw some pretty cool pictures of waves and guys getting out there and stuff I would never attempt, but that's for sure.
Our guys in the office down in Wilmington were pretty jealous last week.
Yeah, I looked pretty good there.
Oh yeah, yeah, definitely.
Well, Julian, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I mean, I know, just heard such great things about the whole project and progress and the contractors and it really, really, really went well.
No, that's great, yeah, that's really great to hear. And it's, obviously, you know, those sandbars building and everything, I mean, it's great to see that protection, you know, out there. And the survey is just showing where that sand is moving to, so.
Yeah, and as it was going on, you guys responded to the oceanfront owners that had any concerns and you addressed them directly took good care of that. And I was really impressed when I went out to be drenched. Really wanted to highlight.
The ships are, yeah.
Amazing.
Pretty amazing, absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
So in the packet, it was also described in the memo, it was about basically the monitoring proposal, which was described as the 19 profiles, a survey report of one-year post-construction report, which Julie was mentioning. So I believe we need a motion to adopt this proposal for monitoring. Is there a second? All in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kelly, it's been a long time since we first started caring about this.
Yes, sir, it has, many decades actually.
It's good to see it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julian.
Thanks, Ken.
Next under new business is item number two, the wind turbine report. And before I turn it over to Debbie, I'd like to recognize, oh, or I was gonna recognize you, I didn't realize you're... Anyway, I was gonna recognize former Commissioner Michael Midgett, thank you for being here.
And I was simply gonna turn it over to you.
Well, that's perfect because you started this, so it's great. And only appropriate that you're gonna be sharing with us, so welcome and thank you.
Thanks for having me. So in interest in time, I'll, you know, go through this report pretty quickly for you. So back in December 2017, the Board of Commissioners had a meeting and the staff was authorized to explore the possibility of constructing a wind turbine energy generating system at one of the town's facilities. The concept of the wind turbine includes installation of an educational kiosk at the site to provide information on energy generated and savings to the town. And of course, any energy that we produce and what's sold to Dominion. So the success of this potential project will depend on several things. The size of the turbine needed to meet the goal of the project, the height of the turbine to reach the winds necessary to generate the energy, and the consistency of the winds, and the location of the turbine and the educational kiosk. Discussions between Mr. O'Brien and the officials at the Appalachian State University, which was instrumental in making the wind turbine... which was instrumental in making the wind turbine at the first flight middle school a reality, indicate a need for hard wind speed data. Hard wind speed data is derived directly from an ANA monitor, is more accurate than the wind speed maps, and specifically applicable for the area in question. There's more information available from the middle school turbine, but will only be good as a baseline. So we want to make sure we get the winds that we have here, and we, from that, from there, we'll be able to find a wind turbine that is better suited for our area and our winds. And with that in mind, the ANA monitor is installed at the first flight middle school, and it'll start capturing the wind speed data for our area. And the data will, so the data's going to be recorded over a one-year period, okay? And from, from there, we'll be, be able to understand the amount of energy that will be generated, and we'll be able to determine the investment of our return. When that is complete, the final calculations will be completed to determine the feasibility of the town's project and the recommendations submitted to the Board of Commissioners. So we will report any information that we've received and how to proceed. So conceivably, it'll be next year before we have an idea of what we want to do. So it's probably better to go slow and be sure than to just, you know, throw something up, because we want this to be a success.
Questions for Michael?
Very much for your work, appreciate you bringing it to us.
No problem.
Yeah, I appreciate you staying engaged and, and that's great that we're going to actually have some real data to use, so I think that's, you know, waiting a year, but to have solid quantifiable figures is what we need.
Yeah, and I, and I really didn't know that, you know, different winds require different turbines, so that was, you know, learning for me as well.
Yeah, I'll put forward to it happening and get it up there.
And so has it been installed at the school yet, or they're, they agreed?
It has.
Oh, it already has?
Yeah, so it's recording, hopefully, all these past.
Lots of wind right there, that's right. Two weeks back to bat.
Yeah, it's pounding.
Okay, well, again, thank you for staying with us, and then I guess you'll let us know when ready to present some figures back.
Certainly will. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move then on to new business item number three, street improvement recommendation for fiscal year 1819. It's better that you don't have to long drive back to Virginia after this, right? I hope you don't, I hope you're staying local. Good.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners and staff. Pete Burkhammer of American Engineering, serving as Town Engineer. I guess one way to look at the last hour or so is, well, had to wade through all these presentations to get down to the serious business. I think about it exactly the opposite. I'm in the infrastructure business, my friends Steve and Derek, and really the whole team. Infra being the prefix for beneath or supporting structure. We, it's our business, our profession, to build a platform so we can run marathons, and so we can have human interactions that make this such a wonderful place, of which to be a resident, that still puts a big old smile on my face. So with that in mind, and again, another very personal privilege from the, it's a small world department, it had been 53 years since I last saw Trudy Gardner. We were classmates at the Governor's School in Salem in 1964. We've changed a little. And then to see us get a Ben Miller painting was sort of poignant, because Ben's wife, Emily Archer Miller, is sort of my goddaughter. She and my daughter Angie were best friends. Emily spent more time at my house than she did at her own up in Chesapeake, so it is a small world. But, moving on, I always trust that you've done your homework, so I'm giving the hour and not going to go into detail, except to the extent you want to ask me questions. It's very exciting and very much our honor to be a part of your bold and diligent stewardship programs over the town's infrastructure. We've recounted what's been going on in the last couple of years. It'll be like, what, 1868, or whenever they drove the golden spike, and one day we'll finally paint the golden edge line on the multi-use path here in about two and a half or three months, hopefully. And that will be truly a great thing. They got a great start, and then they had some setbacks, and now the momentum is back, and I'll say no more about that, to say that we're satisfied with progress. Thank God for daylight savings time, and fill in eleven, fill in May early June. So what we have before you tonight is some changes in our, our recommendation format. It had been that we give you a recommendation for this coming year, and then we sort of hold out what the second and third year might look like. If you've studied this in some detail, you'll see we've done that. Plus, we've laid out what the on-deck circle might look like for the remaining years in a program that would get us out of the business of having any streets that rated poor. At least be catching them just as quickly as they turn poor. So I, I respectfully like to ask you to think about these things long-term. You've been noticing the slight increase in the tone of my little pleas that we might need a little more money each year. Turn the burner up on that one just a teensy bit here. It's, it's hard to do eight or $900,000 worth of work with an annual funding in the $600,000 level. Mary, that's been great in getting us some grants. Sometimes we can do holistic projects together with water funding and, and get more bang for our buck that way. But at the end of the day, I think we're, we're pretty much at the time when, when the board ought to at least consider, with the many other priorities you have to weigh of ramping up our annual funding for our street drainage projects. I also, more commercial, think that we've got some major-scale drainage issues that are listed amongst the road projects. We always do little local drainage as we do the street projects. Every time we leave a street project hidden underground out of sight is a drainage improvement that will make that area more resilient to sharp storms in the future. But there are some bigger-scale projects roughly parallel in a way to the PATH project, and again, my, my favorite is the Memorial Backwater System. Details about that in there. We can continue to, every now and then, drop another phase of it in and amongst the road projects for one year, or one half year, or maybe there's some interest in, in looking at some way to accelerate the funding on that. I'll be more than happy to talk to you collectively or any other way if there's interest in pursuing that further, and I'm sure the staff will as well. But there's good stuff here, we've made great progress, but, but stuff continues to wear out, so we have to stay steady after it to keep that progress in a positive net direction. The project that we recommend to you for fiscal year 1819, which begins in a little over three months, is Whispering Pines. It'll be the biggest non-water project that we've done. It will fix 18% of our suddenly enlarged backlog of poor streets, because Steve and Commissioner Hosen and Jerry Furlik got out and updated the every-five-year street evaluation program, and of our 60 miles or 63 miles counted gravel of street, we found that 3-point-something dropped into the poor category, and that's just normal wear and tear. So we now have around six miles in poor, and this will take care of about 18% of that. So we think it's a good choice, we presented it to you with the usual budgetary recommendations and our proposal. We look forward to getting after it quickly if you, if you see fit to approve it, and in subsequent years, the other projects behind that. I'll stand by for questions now.
Thank you, Pete. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to just say I enjoyed, once again, like going out and helping evaluate the streets like we did five years ago. I think we were out four days, is that right? Five, I missed one because I was sick, and that was the one where they did my streets, so I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to say, this really needs done. It happens to be on the list for the, for the following fiscal year, I mean, have nothing to do with it. But I'm trying to remember, Steve, if you said something like if we continue to do the improvements like we have been, and maybe help a little bit more with the money that in maybe even seven to 10 years, we might be able to just be doing overlays on streets, we can get every, all, get all the streets done, get the drainage done, and get up to a point where we're not going to need a million-dollar budget at that point, because the streets will be solid and done in the right way, that it will just be resourcing whenever need be, but I haven't to do all the construction and the drainage and everything all over again. So I think we're heading in a great direction. That'd be good to see in like 10 years or so, that we have a much smaller budget for streets. I appreciate your leadership in this, because I know when you came on board years ago, it was your philosophy, this is how it should be done, and we bought into it and looked like we did. Thank you for that.
I think in the packet, especially when you get to page two of four, when you're looking at these charts, and anyone's looking at that at home, and you look from a historical perspective of the length that used to be done historically, and where even just over the past, you know, five, six years, the commitment that the board's had to making significant improvements and getting us where we need to be, it really has been pretty substantial. You know, this recent, 2008, what, 700 maybe, Pete, as to we've been averaging in the 20,000 plus, so pretty significant. Thank you for all of your hard work and the committees.
That's what I was going to comment, was I think that, I think a thank you's in order for Commissioner Hogan and his committee on all the hard work that they've done. I think it's also important that in looking at this particular proposal, you have $538,000 in street repairs, and you have $343,000 in drainage improvements, and you have $40,000 in water lines replacement. So it's not just about streets, it's actually doing it the right way and doing it the smart way. And I feel it's important to point out, I, I was so impressed with your presentation that you had written and given to us, Pete, I, I think you hit the nail on the head, fixing our poor streets before they deteriorate to where a moderately expensive overlay becomes an expensive reconstruction, reconstruction is just good stewardship of the money of the, of the streets and the infrastructure of the town. I think it's an excellent proposal.
One question too, how long is, has the town been using the holistic approach of like we're doing, multi-use path, addressing streets, water, and everything at one time to be as less impactful as possible for residents? Is that something that's new, or is it a long-time practice?
Commissioner Winley, I would say about, about 10 or 12 years. You know, we're not perfect at that, we were kind of headed that direction in Ocean Acres, but we just couldn't quite get everything together to do the water lines at that time, their asbestos, so we'll catch them last, and maybe they're coming around close to being due for street improvements again. But we started pressing that idea in the '07, '08 timeframe, and had been pretty, not 100%, but probably 90% of the opportunities we have, we looked and see what water needs to be done. In fact, if a project has asbestos water mains, that sort of helps it up on the priority list, because, you know, we, we used to have about 145,000 milli feet of asbestos water main, we're under 100,000 now, we're down in the, in the upper 50s. So we've gotten about a third of them knocked out. So, you know, while I torture our, our public, our residents, our citizens and guests with the construction, our contractors do a good job of managing their projects by and large with sympathy and concern and consideration for the citizens, but it still isn't the same as a finished project. And, and so in a given 25-year period, let's get them once, not twice.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, a motion would be in order to, to add in reference in the packet, related to the 1819 fiscal year street recommendation, as well as for budgeting purpose, the recommendation for 2019, 2020. So is there a motion for these two items that are included in the packet?
It's good we can read them either, I can just.
You can reference packet, or you're welcome to read them aloud, whichever.
I make our recommendation, we approve the numbers one and two as listed on the, as directed by staff. Is that fair enough?
There's a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Yep, Mr. W. All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks, Steve. And thank your staff once again, and thank Derek.
Okay, new business item number four is the system development fees.
We've got Pete and Steve and Derek. I'm liking that.
Yeah, I guess first we're going to talk about the water system development fees.
This is necessary because of legislation that was passed in 2017, House Bill 435, I'm sorry, 436. And what you have in your packet is the two studies that were done, the water systems, mainly with Pete and the engineering firm, and then the wastewater was done with Steve and Derek, with, of course, Beverly's help on both of the financial standpoints. What this information does is it justifies what we used to call our initial impact fees for our water services, that's the amount that you pay to connect to the system, is your impact on the system. And very simplistic, what this has done is justify that amount, it shows how that amount is determined, that it does cover that cost, or that, I don't know if "burden" is the right, right word to the system. Sort of a term rational nexus is what we remember from the past when we were looking at initial hookup fees. Basically, what Pete's work has done is shown that the town is in line with the $4,000 that we currently charge, there's actually some local room, and as you all recall, we do have a water system master plan that we've been following, that's one of the reasons, like Pete alluded to, we've been able to get rid of the asbestos pipes, we've enlarged some of our water lines to increase fire protection, and the boards, the previous boards and this board's been very good in following, continuing to follow that master plan. So with that being said, our, the new term that will be used is systems development fees. And so you'll see that in the budget as opposed to initial hookup fees, that we will continue to recommend the 4,000 per unit for senior family. Then our sanitation district, the Ocean Acres wastewater system development, same, same thing, you've got to show that what you're charging is justifiable. We currently charge $13.50 per gallon, and, and the work and the calculations that was done, it was determined that this amount needs to be reduced to $12.31 per gallon, which we feel would comply with the requirements in House Bill 436. The, what we're asking The, what we're asking for you this evening is for the board to schedule the water system development fees and wastewater system development fees, analysis for a public hearing on Monday, June the 11th. The public review period's beginning on Friday, March 16th, there's a 45-day review period. I recommended this date because this would be the date for your budget, public hearing, and it just felt like they kind of tie together and give a little bit of additional review time. And with that, I'll ask the team if they've got anything else to say. Mine was a very simplistic review. They've spent a lot of time, had a lot of hard work putting this together. I want to thank them all.
And so this requirement then to do this every five years, this is new based on the House Bill?
436.
436, right, okay. So that's why, I mean, before we were using study and diligence to come up with the figures, but it wasn't a public requirement to have a public hearing as opposed to the 45-day. Right, right, so we are doing the work, now we have to make it official procedurally with this kind of action.
The interesting thing I find about wastewater is the amount that we feel we can justify is less than what the Utilities Commission allows a public or private, a private utility to charge. We, being a public utility, we're not regulated by the Utilities Commission. I just, I think it's interesting, I, I don't know that that was thought, thought through very well in, in Raleigh.
Yeah. I agree.
We're comfortable, even, even though it is a reduction and what we've, what we've already paid for it, we feel that we can justify it.
So the action of the board tonight is truly to schedule the public hearing for Monday, June 11th, and we would start the 45-day review period Friday, this coming Friday, Friday, Saturday.
And I think it's, I think it's Pete said in his very detailed memo that that would continue to give the team kind of an opportunity to continue to post some of this information, continue to get even more of a comfort level. But what you, what you see, I think is pretty much what, how it's going to end up.
And just as a timeline, stat, state statutes, the General Assembly has put July 1st of 18, we have to have this adopted and then our ordinance by July 1st of 18, so that kind of provides a timeline to it. That's right, exactly.
Yeah, hopefully the budget would be adopted. The budget will be adopted in June and then of course that will be in effect on July 1st.
Just for a point of reference, does anybody know what NAGS said, Kitty Hawk's SDF is?
I don't, I don't know what those is. I do know that NAGS heads charges the same that we do, I'm going to assume Kitty Hawk...
Kitty Hawk doesn't collect actually, Dare County, they use Dare County.
They use Dare.
Correct, they, and they use Dare, so they don't have the same issue.
Right, but Dare County will have to...
Correct, correct.
And, and speaking with the NAGS head manager last week, they're also working on this. They're doing a kind of a water systems plan like we've done, and they're incorporating this as a part of that. So they're, Dare County provides for Manio, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores and Duck.
Right, well...
And obviously Collette, because we sold that system to them. They will, they will do their study and then we've done ours and NAGS heads will work on theirs.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, I can put the staff.
Okay. Anyone prepared to make a motion?
I make a motion that the board commissioner schedule the wastewater system development fees and wastewater system development fees, Southern Sanitary District, Ocean Acres wastewater system analysis for public hearing on Monday, June 11th, 2018, public review period beginning on Friday, March 16th, 2018.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything for committee reports this evening?
Other than I was, with the bad spell of weather that we had, I missed the crash attack, so I couldn't, couldn't be down here for the head trade very things. But I'm sure that the town gets some folks who care with us on that.
I do. So we did have a community appearance commission meeting on February 22nd, and just to be in right with everybody, if y'all know, the crash attack is going to be April 21st, Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If there is a rain delay, it'll be 22nd, that, that Sunday afternoon, believe 1:00 to 5:00. And by the way, that is Earth Day weekend as well, so there really is a holiday, kind of a, a good weekend, really good weekend to do it. March 21st, we're going to have our first KDH kicks, I call it kicks butts subcommittee. It's a subcommittee strictly to address the issues of cigarette butt litter on our beaches throughout the town. It's a pretty rough problem and it's keeping getting worse, so we are having our first meeting the 21st. It's the Wednesday after our this month's planning board meeting, 6:00 p.m. in this room to just start a discussion about taking action steps to deal with cigarette butts. And we're also going to try to work hand in hand with surf riders. I know Matt, I believe you guys have a pretty good plan in place with cigarette butt receptacles and maybe going out on the beach or some of our trash cans. We want to partner with you guys, really work together to get the best solution possible. That's, March, community appearance commission's meeting is actually March 22nd, the morning after cigarette's committee, meeting, and that will be at 8:30 in this room as well. Everybody, please mark calendars, remember April 21st, 9:00 a.m. trash attack, please come out, call in, see if you can help us. That's all I have.
Did you finish or you were...
Well, no, that's all I have as far as committee reports. Just I have some commissioner out.
Okay, great, circle back in just a minute, anything?
You may just, about the tourism board? You may do that, mate.
Yeah, we have tourism board meeting, of course, in February, and it was a pretty short meeting, as far as business, we took care of. We did have the presentation, Dave from the Park Service gave his presentation there, and I asked him after the meeting if he'd come and do one for us, and he was nice enough to do that for us tonight. Besides the, all the figures, which I don't have in front of me for revenue and visitors coming to the honor banks, everything's been up so far for the last, it was up for last year and it looks like that trend's going to continue. One thing that I will report is that the tourism, or the visiting bureau blocked the South Beach Grill property that's across the street from the event site, it closed on that last month. And they're evaluating the building right now to see if it's worth saving for any purpose, and it probably won't be, it's pretty old, but it's going to be used for parking. They're also negotiating on another piece of property which hasn't been, come to fruition yet, we'll see how that goes when it does, I'll let you know.
Thank you, that'd be nice, additional parking. All right, we'll move on to the commissioner's agenda, back down to you, Terry.
I received a, a letter, I'm sure maybe y'all did also, from the Alamo Commission, talking about the National March for Meals campaign, and it's dealing with the Meals on Wheels, and they have a pretty active campaign on that. The contact person is Audrey Holland, she's the volunteer administrator, and if anybody wishes to volunteer, they need to get up with her, work well program. Also, on February, on the 26th, I traveled to Raleigh and Commissioner Winley and the mayor went, and the mayor made comment at the BOEM conference up there, and I just wanted to say that I don't think I've ever seen anybody deliver such an effective speech and, and address that unit. He did an outstanding job. It, it was phenomenal to hear some of the things that, that you stated, and the reason we were there is because we were adamantly opposed to, to that. Another group that deserves recognition, and, and we have Matt here tonight, is the Surf Riders Foundation. They organized a lot of the activities and, and put everybody in, in touch with how we needed to address that and how we needed to, to focus our opposition. And you're, you're to be commended, Matt, as a co-founder. Thank you very much for that, it's a very good group and partnership for the town. The next item that I had was, I wanted to bring up a, a point about a memo that we got from staff about an application. There's been some discussion in the past between Commissioner Winley and I of the possibility of an alternate member on our planning board. We have a lot of people that put in applications and, and want to get appointed to different boards and so forth in our town. We don't currently offer an alternate member status on the planning board. It may be something that, you know, would benefit the town and keep people interested if we were able to do that and appoint them as such. So my recommendation at this point would be that, Debbie, we maybe have staff come up with some sort of language to see if that's a possibility to come back to the board that the board would consider wanting to do. I think there's a benefit to, to doing that. Some people may just, you know, if they don't get appointed to something, they may walk away and, and may not see them, and the alternate planning board member, if they were appointed as that, may get involved with the, the town and, and stay involved. A little history, when I first got involved with the town, I was appointed as an alternate planning board member. I served in that position, then as a planning board member. I think there's some benefit there. And then the next item that I wanted to bring forward was special events. We have a lot of special events in the town that, that go on from time to time. I think one of them that happened was called Mommy and Friends, where they had a yard sale at a particular business a couple, three or four years ago. And what happens is we're able to utilize some of these parking areas at some of these establishments for people to set up, like a vendor or some to that effect. There's a couple of different activities that happen in our town every year. And what I need to know, or what I want to know, is how do we couch special events and people that want to set up tents and stuff like that, sell wares during a specific period of time? Is that called through the itinerant merchant ordinance or...
We, we have a, we have a special events ordinance that is handled through the planning department, there's an application that would be filled out, and I think particularly Meredith, if I'm correct, Donna works for that.
She does the majority of the special events, yes, ma'am.
So that's, that's, that's able to happen if somebody wants to do that?
Right.
And they can set up vendors and so on and so forth?
Yes, and I don't, I don't, Meredith's correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that like a yard sale with the mommy and me would fall into that, I don't know.
Probably because it's nonprofit.
No, our, our ordinance is set up for profit and nonprofit organizations, and there's different times of years where you can use for-profit vendors versus they have to be all nonprofit. The, the special event, we have an application, someone fills it out, they do a sketch plan of what they want to set up. One thing that's required is if, if they are going to use a parking lot at a business, that business cannot be conducting regular business because it's required parking for the regular business. So the business, either it can be inside for the event and utilize the parking lot there, or if they're going to be in, utilizing the entire parking lot for an event, the business can't also be open and have regular customers because it's required parking for the business itself. So it's kind of a, a give and take for a business to host one of these events unless it's inside the building. Brewing station does quite a bit inside their building during various different group organizations. I know that several of our businesses have done that in the past. Some do have outside events, but they have yard areas, so it does not take up any other required parking, therefore they can function as normal because they're not use, utilizing required parking.
Casey just made a good example, for example, when you see the car washes, you see them at banks on the weekends.
Absolutely.
On the half-hours, sure.
Right, because the banks close, so that they're able to utilize that parking.
Correct, right. And they, and they don't set up in parking lots, if there's a grass area, the brewing station does festival of trees, it's, it's solely in the grass area in the backyard, it's not taking up required parking, so there's special event. But if someone wants to set up, and the brewing station did this one year, they had a mommy and me yard sale where you bought slots and they numbered their parking spaces, and you could buy a parking space, two parking spaces, or three parking spaces, and the money went to the mommy and me group, but the business, the restaurant itself was closed during the yard sale because it's required parking for the business, so they can't have both happen. So that, but the event, the application, they draw out exactly what they want to do, how long it's going to be, it goes to the Public Services Department for any type of trash or street, goes to police departments, if the police are aware of it, or if they need a crowd permit or different, various things, goes to the fire department for occupancy, and it goes to the planning department for us to review it with our special events ordinance. So it gets circulated through the town and comes back, and it goes to the health department for sanitation purposes.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at maybe what some of the other municipalities do. My personal opinion, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at if we waived 15% of the parking. If, for example, you had 45 parking spaces, you're talking about three parking spaces. How do the other towns deal with it? Maybe you can check into that, Debbie, and then get back to us and, and let's see what they do.
I don't, I don't know how you could waive an ordinance, if you, if you waive a percentage of the parking, that's, that's, that's in the, in the ordinance, the parking ordinance, I don't know how that could, could be done, I would...
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I don't know how they, the other towns do it either.
I, I don't, I don't...
Well, maybe we can check.
Sure, absolutely, so...
Bill to code's going to play in at some point as well.
Right.
Right, depending on the business we're talking about.
Well, perhaps we could do two things, you could look into it and then check out laws, and in the meantime, could you also email what our current application and respective ordinance is ours for review, since we do have, yeah, the process in place? And then when we have the conversation again, we're able to compare truly what we're doing and have been doing to maybe what...
And we have, we do have businesses that have excess parking that can use the parking lot and not have to affect the business hours of it. Seagate North, Kmart, Air Center, they all have excess parking or above the required parking, so you might see an event there and the business is open, well, the businesses are open, well, that's, they're using parking that's not required for, by ordinance.
Would that be like, would that be like Lowe's and Knight Lights Out, Knights, like, what is it?
No, Lowe's doesn't have excess.
Right.
Lowe's does not have excess park, excess parking.
So how, how are they allowed that because it's, because of what it is?
For what?
National, national, I have to...
I don't know, I'd have to review that application.
That, that's interesting. Yes, sir.
And then I wanted to thank Debbie for, and staff for the review that they did and, and sent back to us on the bulk waste pickup, that was very enlightening, and that was a question that had come around quite a bit because of Kitty Hawk's actions.
Right.
So thank you very much for that, and that's all, ma'am.
Steve.
Thank you. Just to, just to recap, make sure I'm on the right track, understand, understand what Commissioner Graves asked, especially events. Now, the planning board and the alternate member, as you stated, you, you were an alternate member of the planning board. So with that being said, obviously it's something that we've had before, ordinance was changed, that eliminated that. Is that some, is that language that the board would like for the staff to bring back to the next meeting?
I love the historical overview, because if we had it once and then we did away with it and then, but I also think, but I don't know, I don't know the history, did we also only have five members and then we changed to seven full members, so I'd love the history
Okay, so that's what we'll provide.
Yeah, that would be good to say.
Okay, so we'll provide you the history and then if the board wants it brought back up as an agenda item, go instruct me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that good?
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Winley?
Thank you, staff, for organizing a KDH committee reception and back on the 21st. It's really nice to spend time with us and the other communities and boards and volunteers. Nice event and I look forward to continuing it in next year. Again, you know, it's been mentioned already, but thank you Sheila for speaking at the bone rally last month, very impressive, I thought our town was well represented there. Thank you, Commissioner Gray and a big shout out to Matt Walker and Surf Riders who were riding that bus. That was lousy weather that day and I'm so happy I didn't have to travel to Raleigh. So a very, very nice job. I think it was sellout and a few people didn't utilize their tickets, so our community was well represented. You know, it was a fun day and a euphoning day, albeit a very worrisome and bad of reason to have to go. I would like to also mention that Chairman Ward also spoke about Deer County and did a pretty good job as well. I don't know if anybody noticed, but we do have a new grocery store in Killbilly Hills now, everybody's been out to see it yet. You know, Publix opened and I wanted to mention, we got to go on their tour, the day before they opened, they made a $5,000 donation to the Deer Education Foundation. I didn't know that was going to happen, but it was really generous and really, really nice first start, first day of our community. They do, they are offering plastic bags, but I do want to also commend and I think you mentioned this as well, they really are pushing those reusable plastic bags. Every time I've gone in there, I have to look, I know the bags are home, you can stop, I have enough of them and they really are, I guess promoting sustainability there.
I think I heard from their manager that they had given out 25, 25,000, which just seems crazy to me.
Oh, yes.
25,000 of those bags, yeah, since they, I don't know if there's an extra zero there or not, but anyway.
Oh, it's a big number.
But they had ordered more boxes and I mean, it was, I'd say probably another 80 boxes that it looked like were stacked out, I don't know how many come a box, but.
It's a lot of bags.
There's a reason.
Right, so maybe it could be that many.
It could be.
It seems like.
Last thing I have to share is this morning, I got to attend a Chamber of Commerce, a community housing meeting, some people may remember if you were at this meeting last month, Karen Brown came to talk about it. The community housing initiative is still in the getting started stages, I can't say there's like a definite concrete plans to report, but a lot of good information is being shared, a lot of major players within the community around community housing are there participating. I think that there's a lot to be hopeful about with the Chambers Housing, Community Housing meeting and that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to Mary this afternoon, they were putting together a presentation for me to give on the dog park and in the interest of giving them a little more time and also saving a little bit of time tonight, I asked her if we could do it. At our next meeting, we'll have a few visuals for it and outline where the dog park is going to be, which is over here at Aviation Park and I just, I saw a rough outline of it and it looked pretty interesting and I'll bring that, bring that with me at the next meeting. And did anybody see the video for the disc golf courses, it's been going around?
It's on Facebook. It was cool.
Yeah, totally cool. Yeah, if you get a chance, go take a look at it, I think maybe we can try to show it at our next meeting. I'm back to that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Under Mayor's agenda, there's two items in your packet, two resolutions. The first is a resolution asking North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper to examine the current membership of the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission. And the second is a resolution opposing any adverse change in the definition of a commercial fishing operation. If you recall back in our January meeting, we adopted a resolution similar to the second resolution, but the Marine Fisheries Commission redefines qualifications for the commercial fishing operation and so there's still with that language, some detrimental language in there, so this is a little, I guess a little more direct of a resolution on that topic. And the other thing, based on some of the actions that have recently transpired by the Marine Fisheries Commission, that's what's prompting the first resolution, asking the governor, who is the one who appoints the members to the commission, to look at that membership and make sure that the members are comprised of meeting the interest of what the commission is all about because some of the actions of late seem contrary to what their sole purpose is in being on that commission. So that's the justification for those two resolutions. These have been adopted in similar format by Deer County Board of Commissioners and also are being circulated to the other towns as well. So with the board's permission, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt both the resolution asking North Carolina Governor to examine the current membership of the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission as well as the resolution opposing any adverse change in the definition of a commercial fishing operation.
I'll second.
Discussion, questions? All those in favor, please stick your hand up.
Aye.
The only other thing this evening, just to, I guess, tag along with the trash attack promotion, is to highlight the poster contest that's going on right now. Prizes are, these are cash prizes. We're doing that, that's awesome. Cash prizes for first, second and third entries into this. This is a great contest for youth to get involved and they're, we've had some great posters turned in before, several of them are now on our trash truck, so it's open to all Deer County students, grades K through 12. The posters need to be turned in here upstairs between 9:00 and 4:00 by March 28th, so definitely get them in by then. It's a fun project to do with your youngins in the rain, right? So anyway, but we've got posters on the website, on our Facebook page to help spread the word about the poster contest and all of the posters that are submitted will be recognized, they'll be judged, is the art council involved in the judging this year or is the committee giving that a look in at Sue?
I don't know.
Okay, well, they'll be judged, awarded and then we'll recognize the recipients at a future meeting. Okay, that's all I have this evening. We'll move on to town managers' agenda.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Town attorney?
Nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Consent agenda this evening, first audience of minutes from the February 12th, 2018 meeting. The second is the proposed budget for the government and education access channel. As you heard earlier this evening, that is a hundred, excuse me, that's a $1,000 membership fee. Number three is budget amendment, that we had received consensus from the board earlier last month, thank you very much, and this is to provide funds to purchase a new police department canine training and kennel. Number four is a recommendation for this 2017-18 lease purchase agreement, total amount to be financed is $1,083,447.47. This is at an interest rate of 2.64% with eight semi annual payments with BBNT submitting the lowest overall financial cost. Number five is the Glenmere and Ferris Avenue funding provisions. The proposal for improvements to the Glenmere and Ferris Avenue beach access will be received on Thursday, March 15th. The town has received grant funding from both staff, excuse me, from both state of North Carolina for these improvements and our matching funds must be transferred from our reserve fund to the necessary expenditure line. We're asking for this to be approved this evening so that we don't hold up the project before our next meeting. To allow for me to expend those funds necessary from the capital reserve combined with the grant funds will equal the amount of the proposed improvements to Glenmere and Ferris Beach Access. And then lastly is the January 2018 monthly reports and staff recommends approval of the consent agenda that has submitted and a motion would be in order.
Should I move? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please stick your hand up.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, for all of those who have stayed with us at the end here, we're back to the second time that's set aside for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Matt, go ahead, jump up. Matt, and welcome. You don't have to run, it's okay.
Matt Walker, co-chair of Surf Rider Foundation, I just wanted to say, and I did want to say this before the thank you, but continue to love this, love this, thank you guys for all your help, particularly to the rally last weekend, you guys have been supportive the whole time and I agree that the honorable, wait, the honorable doc, wait.
Honorable doctor.
Doctor, exactly, did a great job. I also have to share the credit though, seriously, all these groups going and doing that and the Coast Federation particularly, especially when it came to the bus, like they organized that whole thing, so they get full credit for that. Well, so Mike Flynn, Coast Federation, thank you. Next stage is, we won't hear anything until November, so really from here on out, it's kind of a apply pressure where you can thing. Locally, we'll have Hands Across the Sand on May 19th, we're still putting that together, but that's definitely more of a visual, just continuing show of opposition. In addition to that, we're hearing that the thing that people can do is apply pressure to elected officials and DOI, so that's Senators Tillerson, Burr, the White House and the DOI that need to hear it loud and clear because they'll, you know, the public comment period is over, but of course, those people can still get that message and share it, so those are key. We're more than welcome to help the trash attack litter campaign, seems like a big issue, maybe a current TV spot before the tourism season might make a help in terms of telling people to get a reusable bag or don't throw a cigarette butt or use less plastic, et cetera, et cetera, just a thought. And then finally, in the interest of accuracy, actually the sandbars aren't very good right now, I didn't want to harsh that guy's mellow, correlation is not causation, who knows anything, hopefully they'll be killer by summer, but so the grapevine doesn't get a hole of some erroneous or the yay, everything's killer now, not right now, cross your fingers for the next few months and.
That's it.
Thank you guys again, seriously, it's a big deal to change in the last few years of overseeing how our local, everything is just, it's full speed ahead and it's really nice to see because it's going to take all that and everything else, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? My papers? So thank you all for staying with us, I guess a motion to adjourn is in there. Your second?
Second.
Do you have some paper? Alright, stay safe, get safely.
Thanks, everybody.